Please.
Everything?
Personnel. Do I say a number or a name?
If it was a single one, we could pull that one off.
Okay.
You can call the number.
Alright. It is number two then.
There's a second?
I'm second.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner? Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellenson?
Yes.
Alright, we'll move on to the audience listeners. There is none. Oh, right now we don't appoint a secretary for town.
Mr. Reiner, would you like to do that?
Director Ward, okay, you had in your packet, the office September not quarter, up to date and updated. And I gave you a report so you can see where your expenses and your revenues are up to date. I hope to have the other one. I'm just wondering if you guys would like them as I get them done, sent out. Can you say can we evaluate them or would you like to wait for the next week? Okay.
We were hoping that November, December, January done.
Today, I got November done, I just haven't printed it up. In December and January, I did before. As Mark had done November, he gave it to me last night and he couldn't finish them. I used that up. Not quite done, almost done. And January, December, January goes right behind him, so they'll be out.
We're darn close.
Yeah.
And then what would you like to do is then once we get everything caught up, possible to something with PMA in April, we can save budgets for July.
And also I'd like to have Steve, um, pond guard come in and go over the budget and personnel projections. Part of the pond guard, help me get through that for next year so I can start budgeting for the personnel.
Thank you. Got several items here. Julia and I met in the mic here and Lori Miller earlier, uh, late last week, about the healthcare purchasing pool that they talked to us last fall about and we think they'll provision some legitimate for us. The initial findings are encouraging. It would save us about five percent on our renewal rates. It would also allow us to keep food, hospital, shields, as well as the same benefits and coverages. We're remaining exact same. If we chose to do it, we'd have to get into a three-year commitment with them. One of the pros of it is, is by having more lives in this pool, it does kind of smooth out some of your highs and lows. Some things I do and some things I don't. Are not so good, so. Mike and Lori would like to come to present to you guys the findings, answer any questions that you have regarding the purchasing pool. What format would you like to do it in? Through committee, would you rather just have them come to the board meeting? What's your little feedback on that? The whole board?
Board meeting.
Yeah, to the whole board.
Sure, we'll do that and bring them back in April if that's what you want to do. YMCA sent me a nice letter. They have intentions of renewing their program again with us for next year. I've heard good things about it. They also said that they want to bring it back, that they have no intention of raising it. So we can have a simple healthcare program similar with YMCA. And as that comes back, I'll keep you posted with that. We completed our student growth component of our evaluation plan through our parajoint committee facilitated by John Hadley. We got it done in four sections as opposed to six. They thought it would take the six, but we got it done in four. It was a very good cooperative group. We got a lot done, we worked very cooperatively, collaboratively together to keep the whole plan. We are going to meet on April 5th to walk through the entire plan, iron out any of the caves and make sure that we're all on the same page with student growth implemented into our teacher evaluation plan. And then hopefully have something back to the board in April. To be able to present to you at that time. Spring break begins in a week and a half and then on the backside of that, I'm sure our kids are excited, but we have part testing that'll take place. My daughter came home from school, she's better taken now and she was not real thrilled, but we have coming up next too, so. And then one last thing I have strategic planning, action teams are winding down. They're almost done, I've got two of my four plans back, but they will be done before we go to spring break. I'm trying to set up a timeline with Mel Munson to be able to bring our steering committee back together to approve the action plans, the team, the work that the action teams did. And then we'll hopefully, it looks like I'm finally on in April, but I might have something to bring to us in April on strategic plans. Looks like April might be a marathon. So that's the end of my report. If there's any questions, we'll call it out. Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to the board. Policy Commission, Mr. Ward?
Waiting for administration to find a time to get together.
Business Services Committee?
Facilities? We met, we discussed roof replacements, roof repairs, that's part of the package, so we're not going to go through that as one of our voting items. But that was mainly what we were looking at, is the items that we need to look at and try to take care of this summer until last year.
And the CIA Committee?
We have not met since the last board meeting, but we do have a meeting planned for April 12th at 3:45.
Alright. And we'll move on to the Conservative General. Do you have a motion to approve the amendment? There's a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellenson?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Okay. And finished business?
We have in your packet and have provided a motion for you to approve, the different reform of an architect to prepare bid documents for the middle school roof replacements, as well as approving other repairs between the middle school and the upper elementary. And your document there, it will come out in two different categories. The one category with these classroom wing, tech room, the music room, the maintenance, the boiler room, the electrical vault. That is the one that I would ask that the board approve to have the architect begin the prepared bid documents for the middle school. Some of those have designs already, some of them do not. But we ask them to create the designs and then create the bid specs and head out to bid. The other ones we'd ask to improve there too are also related to a lot of our roof projects there. But that's one we don't need designs for. Jim is confident that we can handle those on our own and we can work through the polls to try to get our amounts back there. Ed, anything you'd want to add?
No, there was a lot of good discussion about trying to use up some of the work that we already paid for and to try to get some of this started. The group was very supportive of I can jump, so desire to get this bid and get those right away.
I guess the last thing I would add there too is we do have 246,000 subside in our life safety account. Not all of that is life safety work, but we could be using the life safety work, that money out of that account to take care of the life safety work. And any of the other projects would come out of capital projects. Our capital projects account, which has about 748,000. Told you a little bit about the funding. We would look to try to get that moving so we can have that done yet, just some, it's a tight window, but we're hoping we can get that one.
Mike, when you say capital, capital improvements, we're really talking about the sales tax money, correct?
Yep, that's sitting in the capital projects account.
Okay.
Any questions?
There can be some discussion on that capital, all the money being spent on that. Just on agenda, huh? Strong feeling that some of that should be put to public for a vote. Oh, that's huge. So I mean, you can go ahead and pitch it out because you don't know what's going to come back yet. Other ways of funding it, other than using that sales tax.
You want to make that an agenda item for it?
You kind of got to wait to get the bids back, I think. Talk them up for dollars.
Can we roll that in?
Yeah, well, you know, if you can roll it into the bids, but.
No, I mean.
If you got enough in life safety, then maybe that's what you do. Maybe you put it out for bid and all the bids come in higher than you are expecting and you reject them all. It's hard to move forward until you know what the amount is going to be, whether or not it's going to be bid for animals. Like, I mean, it should be discussed, but whether it be next meeting or whatever. You take a known amount.
What I meant was, is when you get those amounts back and then make that a part of our discussion.
Sure, I would think it should be.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't get all that, can you review that for me quick, Mike?
Yeah, that when we get the bids back, make it an agenda item to speak to how we're going to fund it. We've got life safety sitting there, we've got the capital projects. But Don was mentioning too that we might want to look at funding in a different way, other than just going straight to the sales tax. Thank you. Yep.
And do we have a motion on the roof replacement repairs?
Supposed.
Second.
Motion's second.
Can you read the motion please? Prove to move forward with district architects to prepare bid not used for middle school roof replacements, including other roof repairs identified in life safety.
For discussion, were all the roof repairs urgent in the life safety report? Or were some of them not urgent?
It's in your document. Right now, states whether they're classified as urgent or required. And then there's some on there that are suggested that they are taxed.
But not all of them are.
But the motion's only speaking to those particular items that are on health, life, safety amendment?
They also include that some suggested, huh?
That's not what the motion is though, is it?
That's true, because it does talk about just like the end of life safety. And some of them are not listed on the life safety report by Jim, correct? So then we need to amend that motion. What about this?
So can you identify on this screen here exactly which ones we're talking about? Did Jim come up and point to them or something?
The ones that are not, that the architects missed on life safety would be the tech office at the middle school, the music room, the maintenance area, and the boiler room.
That's like number five over here.
Correct. There's also some repairs on the southwest corner of our elementary to maintenance.
Go right down, Jim. So number five, that's on the.
Eight, four, and five of the capital improvements for 2016 and 2017 are the ones that we're talking about trying to get work done.
And those are all on the health, life, safety report?
Except for the ones that I'm suggesting that we do repairs on. And that's number five, or not repairs, but replacements. And that would include, they're included on that list there that you're looking at on the capital improvements list. But not everything on that capital improvements list from 2016 to 2017 was on health, life, safety. I tried to get all the urgent stuff on and some other things that I strongly recommend we get working on. And those are listed there as line items suggested.
Just look at three, four, and five then, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Three, four, and five.
They're all on the report, but they're not all urgent, because they say required and suggested next to them.
Suggested are, were missed on the report.
So you're suggesting them not health, life, safety?
They're not, they're not part of health, life, safety.
So based on all these estimations on the side, what is the total that is in the motion?
Which is two items, three, four, and five, the total there is 234,750 dollars. That's just a rough estimate, that's not.
Okay, but that's what we're putting out for, putting out on the street, Jim? That's what you want to put on the street, is about that much?
A portion of that. The ones that are going to get replaced. The repairs, I'm not going to put on the street, I'm just going to go out for polls on those, as I would normally do. But the replacements, we need to get architects involved and so you have to go through that game. But I wanted, the reason I threw on the suggested roofs at the middle school, first of all, to clean up that building for all the roofs that are really deficient. As long as we're going to have crews out there, we can slide those smaller roof spaces in for a fraction of the price it would take to bring it back. It just seemed like it was a matter of economics that made the most sense to do that. So if we could list them as.
Are they alternates?
I say we could put them out as alternates. Some of those have already been alternated on previous bid packages. And that's where the work from the architects have already been done, as far as the engineering. We could certainly break them all out as alternates.
Well, are there any of the, do you think any will run as a single item over 20,000?
Of the small ones?
Yeah.
Potentially the tech room.
I would think, if it was, you may want to list that as an alternate or maybe circumvent the bid process a little bit. If we don't list it as an alternate on the package when you put it out, comes back in and you just award one, hey, while you're here, do this, it comes up to 21,000. You've circumvented the bid process if you don't have this an alternate, basically. Would be what I would say. Otherwise, people would be doing this all, circumventing the bid process.
Yeah.
That, that can be worked out probably with you and the architect about when he gets an estimate put together.
That's why I was trying to keep the repairs away from the architect also. I mean, that was my motivation on that. It may be the same roof, who knows? But I'm going to quote that separately.
Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I, you know, I've only heard bits and pieces of it, but certainly we discussed the idea that there was a blend of life safety and regular work here. We knew that going in when we made our recommendation, but we also believe that getting, that Jim and Jim concurred that we'd probably get a better price to have all this work done at the same time, rather than pick all these separate projects, if I'm not mistaken. And I think that that was, the committee was pretty much in unanimous agreement to get the whole thing fixed, rather than waiting a year or two and have it become a crisis. Jim certainly indicated to the group that all of those roofs were deficient and had been tech sort of put as part of other options on other roofing projects that had been suggested to get done, but didn't get completed for whatever reason, mostly for budgetary considerations. I think that we were pretty adamant that we wanted that whole section of that building taken care of in one full loop.
Yeah, okay.
My discussion isn't not whether or not we do them, but whether or not we follow the bid process if they're large enough dollar amounts.
Could you hear that, Ed?
No, I did not.
What Don was saying, Don was not saying whether or not to do them, he was just saying with some of those other repair projects, are they large enough to have put in there for the bid process? So that's what he was just talking to Jim about.
Yeah, and actually we talked about that too. I mean, if you remember, like, you know, what we needed to put out for bid and what we did, but we just felt like we just get approval from the board to get a sense of where they wanted us to be, to get the thing out there on the street and get working on it, but on the job, the architect decided which of those pieces needed to be put in place. When we had that discussion, I'm pretty sure we were talking about where we put the number was and we needed to be under to keep them from going out for bid.
Yep. Don, do you want to rephrase the motion?
Not at all.
The motion doesn't limit us to just life safety report issues though, correct? Middle school roof replacements, including other roof repairs identified in the life sense, safety. So middle school plus some of these other life safety issues. So it's not limiting us to just life safety.
That's right, that's what Ed was talking about just now. There's other areas of that roof that need to be addressed. As long as we're going to have a crew there for the major portion, hopefully we can slide in these smaller areas. And there's some economics and doing it at the same time.
So are we happy with the motion? In that case, we do have a motion and a second. Move to a roll call.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellenson?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Curious, and I have B, the purchase of trade of buses.
At our last meeting, it was voted to be brought back at this next meeting. We had a discussion about it in our facilities meeting, and at that meeting, we discussed working with catch and install it through our summer projects, plus all of the designs that they have now, and then possibly tailing the architect and looking at it after someone would have just done. Did I sum that well enough, Ed?
Yep. If you got it right, honey.
Okay. No motion or anything to do with the architect, but we'll bring it back in.
Moving on to do business, March 2016 bill. Review the bills, the whole appropriate team, all the little comments. Make a motion, hey, the March 2016 bills is today.
Second.
Motion and a second, here you start. Roll call.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellenson?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Curious, and I have B, the purchase of trade of buses.
Yes, Julia's been working on this. This is part of our plan each year where we rotate some buses in and out of our fleet. And these three buses are, it's kind of their time for us to rotate them out. Like I said, this is a partial plan that we have in place every year. So our recommendation is to approve the purchase of our trade of the buses. And in the description, it said that this would come from our transportation fund and will be paid in cash. Julia, anything you'd like to add to the?
Yes, I'm happy to have any question.
Which three buses were we trading?
We're trading in, bus number 37 and 36, the 2004 Bluebird, and 2005 Bluebird, and bus, which is a full-size bus. And then bus 105, which is a small wheelchair bus, one wheelchair and coin passengers, or which is like 10, 10 scar seats for the little kids. And we are replacing the wheelchair bus with another wheelchair bus, but with 66 passenger one. So then one of our thoughts were if we do have a wheelchair student that wants to go on a field trip, they're not isolated, and they can ride along with the other kids with a bigger bus, and better have a bigger bus on the fleet.
Could it work as a sub for us?
Yes.
We also have the ability to grow more wheelchairs in there too.
Right, vacate some of the seats out.
That's why it's got some flexability to it.
Alright, we have a motion.
I move that we purchase the buses as presented, we're trading in three.
We have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Just a minute, please. Just want to make sure you understand the motion. And the quote on, excepting quote one and quote three together. Quote one and quote three is what we're accepting, right, Julie?
Correct.
Julie, are there any discussions about leasing rather than purchasing?
This hasn't been something that North Boone has done in the past, so we've just been looking into it. But if that's something that we would like to look in the future, I am happy to.
Okay.
Julia, are you sure this one's going to be expanded past one wheelchair?
Yeah, you can take two seats out for each, for each wheelchair that you want to add.
That's kind of quote number four, isn't it?
No, no, that one already comes with three wheelchairs. But we can look at quote number three, which is $20,000 cheaper, and then take, if we need to add wheelchairs, we can take two seats out and add one wheelchair for two seats.
Any further discussion? Alright, roll call.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellenson?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Curious, moving on to I C, resolution authorizing orders of dismissal of non-tenured teachers other than final year for engineering teachers. We just have two teachers.
We just got two teachers that were not really week for next year. They're both after divestment. And that's something that is kind of at the beginning of the year. And that's a grant, and so this has gone through for the last several years. Those are grant funded, and so we wait till we are more confident that we've got the grant coming back before we go.
Any discussion?
Are those people typically rehired or do we go through the process of?
We make sure members are there, we make sure the money's there.
Okay.
And once we are confident that that need is there, the finances are there, then we can go.
Okay. But no stipulation that they necessarily have to be brought back, those individuals? Or no stipulation that we have to open the hiring process again? Okay.
We have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the dismissal of the non-tenured teachers as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Ellingson? Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Reiniger?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
I made a motion to move to executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint against an employee of a public body or against legal counsel for the public to determine its validity and collecting negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives for deliberations concerning salary schedules for one-on-one classes of employees.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Reiniger?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellingson?
Yes.
Are you transferring? Okay. You back?
Yep.
Okay, good deal. All right, we have a motion to adjourn to the executive session.
So moved.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All votes? Caris, we're back to the executive session. Do we have any recommendations from executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the job description for principal and principal coordinator as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Reiniger?
Yes.
Mr. Ward? Mr. Ellingson?
Yes.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
I'd also like to make a motion to accept the rights and information of Manchester Public Health School's principal, Aaron McChrystal, effective July 31st, 2016.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Reiniger?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellingson?
Yes.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Okay, I'd also like to make a motion to certify the hire of Mr. Sarah Gavin, educational therapist, $65,000 plus I am around 2016.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellingson?
Yes.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
No. Or yes, I'm sorry. Name's on, my bad.
Mr. Reiniger?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve to set up a NDEA sick bank to benefit Eastern Trimmer for the remainder of the 2015-16 school year, not to exceed 32 days. Certified staff commitment should donate one day.
Second.
Mr. Ellingson?
Yes.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Reiniger?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
I'd also like to make a motion to approve the retirement of Dale Purvis, the former of the school year 2020. The understanding is following the current retirement language of the NDEA contract.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Reiniger?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ellingson?
Yes.
Any word, does it still, or? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ed, do you have anything further?
Yeah, will you have, Julia, give me a call, please?
Right now?
That, please.
Okay.
I can transfer you.
Oh, yeah, hold on, Ed.
We're going to transfer you.
We're going to transfer you in, okay?
What's your extension bill?
Thanks, Ed.